All right, seeing as we have a quorum, I'll call to order this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, May 8th, 2024. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Pete Mountsmith?
Here.
Sossberg?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will move on to the land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize the city of Bloomington sits on native lands. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, specifically in Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. All right, to summarize the agenda tonight, we have no minutes for approval. Then we will move on to reports from council members, reports from the mayor and city offices, although I believe we have none of those either. Then reports from council committees, I believe we have none of those either. The next part of our agenda is reports from the public, so that's the first section of public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Then we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. And then we have legislation for second readings and resolutions. Under that heading, we have Ordinance 2024-10, amending Ordinance 23-25, which fixed the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and Ask Me employees for all departments of the city of Bloomington for 2024, specifically to add a position to the Department of Public Works and to revise job titles and job grades within the Office of the Mayor and Department of Public Works to adjust or better reflect the nature of those positions. Then we will move on to Ordinance 2024-08, to enact Title 13 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Stormwater. Then we will move on to Ordinance 2024-09, to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Wastewater, to remove Stormwater language. Then we will move to legislation for first readings, and under that heading, we have Ordinance 2024-11, to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles in Traffic regarding stop intersections along Seventh Street. And then we will have also first reading, Ordinance 2024-12, another amendment to Title 15, Vehicles in Traffic, and this one is kind of a catch-all that has stop intersection, a couple of stop intersections and signalized intersections on the west side, parking on Sixth Street between Walnut and Washington Streets, and some no-parking zones. Then we will move to our second period of public comment on items not on the agenda. We will then talk about council schedule and finally adjourn. So we will move to reports from council members. I'll start on my left. Councilmember Daley, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I just wanted to circle back to my report last week. I talked about it is Mental Health Awareness Month in May, and there's an organization called SAMSA, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and they actually set aside weekly themes throughout the entire month of Mental Health Awareness Month. And so I didn't go over what last week's was, so I thought I'd go over last week's and this week's themes. Last week was older adults, highlighting how to support the unique mental health needs of older adults, accenting that it's never too late to get help, mental health is important at every age. And then, so that was passed, but this week, we're actually focusing on children and teens. So this week's focus is on resources to help children and teens build resilience, self-care strategies, and skills for managing life stressors in healthy ways. So it's really important and helpful to just kind of keep these things in mind, that by teaching children and teens coping skills, we can empower them to take charge of their mental health, and good mental health increases the ability of teens and children to practice self-care and face challenges with resilience. So essentially, the more we talk about it, the more we de-stigmatize seeking help for mental health. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report. Thanks.
Councilmember Asari?
Just a super quick one to bring to everybody's awareness. The Affordable Connectivity Program, I think many of you may not have followed, but did not get funded, the sort of deadline to fund it by the federal government was this, a month ago, so it ended in April. So starting in May, people who are beneficiaries of the ACP program are losing those benefits. And in Monroe County, that's something like 5,700 families who are receiving subsidized internet usage. And so with the ending of this program, I think we, as a council, and hopefully with other partners in the city and county, should be thinking, you know, about how we can make sure that this doesn't widen digital divides and what type of an investment we can make, particularly in this next budget cycle, in internet connectivity, particularly for the other side of the digital divide. And so I have started some initial conversations, starting a couple of months ago, and I should have reported earlier, but there were a lot of other things on our agenda, but have started some initial conversations with folks at SCAP and at the university to see what we might do, but just wanted to report out for everybody's awareness so that when I propose some things in the future, hopefully you'll be on board to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sossberg?
Yes, I do have a report. Thank you. I have two things. The first is I do want to send a Happy Mother's Day out there in recognition that Sunday is Mother's Day, so in case you need a reminder about that, to call your mom or have lunch with your mom, or whatever it is that you usually do with your mom, here's your reminder. And similarly, I want to say that I know that Mother's Day is not a happy day for everybody, and I hope, though, that everybody can take the opportunity to mother yourself if you don't feel like you had a good relationship with your mother, or your mother was not there for you, which I know that for some people, it's very triggering, and for others, it's a celebration. So I just hope that everybody can take something from Sunday, because at some point, you know, we all came into the world in some kind of usual way, and we can, at the very least, honor ourselves as being valuable and important people. And then the second thing that I want to talk about, it's slightly less sappy, and that is to say that Peter Iverson and I hopped on a city bus on Friday, just for fun, in the afternoon, to talk to people, and it was, we can say that it was a moving constituent meeting, consisting of whoever happened to be on the bus at the time. And I had a lot of really interesting conversations with different people, and one of the things that I just want to highlight is that I feel like I hear about, and we talk about, a lot of the ways that the city bus system, Bloomington Transit, is not always serving enough, like our routes, like there's not enough routes, there's not enough frequency, and all of those things. But nearly everybody who I talked to, who was using Bloomington Transit as their primary means of transportation, was really, really happy with the service, and really felt like they could get where they wanted to go. And of course, part of that is that they live in Bloomington as somebody without a car, and as somebody who's dependent on that, and when you do that, you, you know, arrange your housing, and arrange your job, and arrange, you know, your entertainment all around the bus schedule, and you are able to do that. And that was a priority that they had to make because of whatever individual situation that they were in. So I know that we have a lot of work to do still in terms of getting more people riding and expanding that ridership, expanding those routes, expanding that availability, but that once we do that, it's, it can be a really positive experience for people. So I invite anybody else on this dais to join me on a bus sometime, because it was, it was very interesting, and it's definitely kind of reaching out to a population that you're not necessarily going to see in council chambers on Wednesday night. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty, do you have a report this evening?
No. Thank you.
Councilmember Zulik?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I'd like to mention something about, since it's spring and things are growing, I wanted to express my appreciation for the planters that the city maintains. Joanna Sparks, who's the city landscaper, oversees this, and I've been really impressed in the past, because what she's tried to do is to put natives in, and native diversity in the planters, and I know that this is not always appreciated by certain people, which is fine, because, you know, it is an aesthetic, there is an aesthetic quality. This year, she, or maybe in the fall, she implemented tulips and icance and other bulbs within the planters, so you get a spring bloom of things that are, they're not native, but they're not invasive, and they can coexist with the native plants. So native plants are important for pollinators and then other organisms that forage on the plants. When the plants are done flowering, well, you know, there are still organisms that are using the plants, so the value is to be appreciated even after they flower. For instance, milkweeds, there are caterpillars that forage on the milkweeds. Why is this important? Because we have a decline of the insect population that's quite dramatic and frightening, and one of the drivers of extinction, one of the, one of the five drivers of extinction include non-native invasive plants. So to the extent that people can appreciate native plants, maybe learn from them, plant them in their yard, we're helping the biodiversity of Bloomington. So again, shout out to Joanna Sparks for her good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruff?
Thank you. I just want to give a nod to all the candidates who ran yesterday in the election. You know, it takes guts to run, takes time, effort, sacrifice, is a huge opportunity cost, and we all have a lot of things we could spend our time doing. And I just, you know, I don't really like to even think in terms of winners and losers, some people got some more votes than others, but everybody got some support from some, and we're all the better, all of us, for the candidates that do run, whether, win or lose. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to report, I attended the Capitol Improvement Board meeting this afternoon at the Convention Center, and there was a presentation by Schmidt Associates, which is the architecture and design firm that started with this project way back in 2018. And there were, there was a lot of public outreach at the time about what the Convention Center expansion should look like and where it should go, and so they kind of did an update of that work now, five years later, because the last report of theirs was 2019, I can't do my math. And so they kind of just went over the different options, and, you know, basically, we could go north, south, east, or west from the Convention Center currently. And they also talked about pros and cons of each, parking, what they see as the parking requirements, and the land acquisition costs, which would probably, would be an issue for land to the north and to the west. The other two directions, the land is owned by the county and would be given at no charge to the project. So that was an interesting presentation. I think that the, my colleagues received the slide deck for that, and I'm happy to share with anybody else. They also discussed the request for qualifications for a hotel partner for this project. They received six responses that will now be evaluated by JS held, which is their consultant on the project. And the request for proposals for a construction manager is due on May 10th, this Friday. So, and they also mentioned that they will be developing their own website to make sure that they have good communication and transparency with the public. One of the appointees, Jay Baer, volunteered to do that himself. So that'll be a good addition to let everybody know what they are doing. So far, there is, there is a webpage on the county government website that does have some good information. So that is my report, and we can now move on to, I think, as I understand, there's no report from the mayor or city offices at this point. Any reports from council committees? I don't think so. So we'll move on to public comment. So there's a maximum of 20 minutes for this part of the meeting, and according to our municipal code, people will have five minutes each unless there are more than four speakers. I see very few people here in council chambers. Mr. Lucas, could you please make the announcement for anybody on Zoom who might want to comment?
Yes, if there are. Public joining us virtually, who'd like to speak, please let us know by raising your hand. You can do that by clicking the raise hand button under your control bar. You'll find that in the, under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Do you see any hands, Mr. Lucas?
Just one at the moment.
All right, we'll start here in chambers. You'll please sign in, give your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. A good evening to both the council staff, Clerk Bolden. I want to echo, it feels like I'm going to comment on the council updates, but I just want to echo Councilmember Ruff's comment on those elected officials. Yesterday was Election Day. We didn't have the turnout probably I was hoping for, but that was pretty much across the state. But my hands up, heads off to all of those candidates who ran for office, put themselves on the line and worked tirelessly. I got campaign literature knocks on the door, and putting yourself out there is really tough, and this is a zero-sum game. I mean, you either win or you do not. And I, I am the point where I can't even go to the watch parties because it's too stressful, because I don't want to see anybody losing. So this is, it is tough stuff. So I, you know, always get asked, would you run for office? What do you think about this one? And I always go, I, yeah, I don't think so. So it's, it takes a lot of courage and a lot of hard work. My next, I just want to bring up that the chamber had its inaugural Valor Awards earlier today. I believe Councilmember Ruff was there. I talked to Councilmember Zulik. This was just honoring, basically, police fire corrections and dispatch for their selfless acts. We've been doing the Educator of the Year Award for 20 years, and we thought, well, we've been talking a lot about the need for public safety in the city, and maybe this can sort of help with a little bit of recruitment retention within the community. And it was represented by a total of nine departments, and from our beloved city of Bloomington, we had Officer Ray Bold took away the law enforcement prize, while Captain Jeff Hacker of the Bloomington Fire Department won the prestigious David Hamilton Lifetime Achievement Award also. Jared Bailey was the dispatch winner, and I heard more great comments about including the dispatch personnel. If you saw the last public safety update, we're hurting on getting people to do that job, and if you've been up there on top of the transit building, that is a difficult job, and it is something I cannot imagine doing, and we need to recognize those individuals especially. But, you know, beyond honoring those great public servants, it was a great way to convene different groups that have some jurisdiction issues. We have some political entities that sometimes don't get along, so it was great to see over 300 people from our community attend today. And a little bit, you know, we had the ARPA monies that both the county and the city received, and we did a bunch of wonderful projects on that that I think would not have happened without the support of the Biden administration. But as we look, you know, as we look forward, I put out a piece to a couple of the council about, from a Ball State economics professor, regarding some of the difficulties we're having deficit-wise within the federal government, where during the Great Recession, we were, we were at 60% of our GDP for, and now we're, for the debt, and now we're at 120%. Spending is 23.4% of the GDP, while revenue is only 17.4. If you go back to the turn of the century when Clinton had the balanced budget, those were right around 18%. And what this is going to mean ultimately is probably some pass-through money from the federal government that's not going to come to these cities, and I think it's important as we head to the budget season, so to plan ahead and look for what our priorities are, what are the outcomes we want, look at our economic initiatives, not for what they are, but what those outcomes want to be. We all want, you know, great parks, we want a vibrant downtown, but, you know, what is it going to take to get that? You know, the surveys might not indicate that they want a convention center, but in order to get maybe that vibrant downtown, it might take that, so it's not exactly a direct correlation. But that's, it's also important to sort of look at those, as we have been recently, those resident surveys, maybe even have a couple focus groups on those priorities, because it's going to be making those tough decisions as we, as we move forward. Other tough decisions, I saw a letter from the council, and I, please, I'm sure someone will correct me when I, wrong, at the RDC meeting, a letter signed by the council on not the use of TIF funds for the convention center project. I just want to make sure that when that was bought for, I believe it was $7 million with TIF funds for the convention center, not that you couldn't change course, but it's important, it needs to be something of redevelopment, you need, it needs a purpose. Right now, it is not getting any tax revenue, so beyond saying what it won't be used for, we need to start thinking about what it will be used for, and this is part of just these bigger picture things that I've been sort of pushing for right along. I'm at my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have somebody via Zoom who would like to comment?
We did. I see the hand has been lowered, so I'll wait just a second. I don't believe so.
All right. That's it for this section of public comment. I'm going to take the privilege of the floor, I should have mentioned this, under reports from the mayor and city offices, because it is sort of related to that. There was no other more appropriate spot in the agenda.
Madam President?
Yes?
I think there was somebody who wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not see that.
Sorry.
Yes. So we're not done with public comment. We have somebody else here in chambers. So please state your name and sign in, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Okay. I'm going to read this, it's a prepared comment. Hello, my name is Jamie Scholl. I come to you tonight as a previous member of the Jack Hopkins Social Service Grant Committee and as a founding member of the Bloomington Food Policy Council, BFPC. I have served on the board in the roles of co-chair advocacy, chair of communications, and lastly, as chair of the board. I will note that I will, that I fully expect that I will be attacked personally and possibly my business via social media channels, including slander, and have contacted my attorney and prepared to file protective orders. First, the foundational beginnings of BFPC. We rooted the organization in the development of local food sovereignty. In solidarity with the work of the Agroecological International Organization, La Via Campesina, foundational to the small grower, is access to land, water, seeds, and with the aim of widening and strengthening alliances between people, organizations, and local government that begins with a democratic and transparent organizational process. It's come to my attention that the current leadership of the BFPC, being the fiscal sponsor of the People's Market, may not be abiding by organizational bylaws. Additionally, there appears to be a mismanagement and misuse of financial resources, including federal funds that are to support BIPOC farmers in the entire southern region of the state. And it's questionable that the BFPC is abiding by state law by having in place a chair, secretary, and treasurer. I've been provided information regarding lack of payment to some of these farmers and a food artisan in the amount of approximately $100,000. Two farms, because of this, may possibly lose their farm and home. One in particular has suffered not only financial losses, but lies about the situation and public attacks on social media, as well as engaging in what I would call defamation. This is only the tip of the iceberg, as I understand that there is an audit being conducted by the state of Indiana into the LFPA monies meant for BIPOC farmers in southern Indiana. The outcome of this contract for USDA LFPA funding for BIPOC farmers has been canceled, leading to the entire southeastern and southwestern regions of the state having no access to this funding. This funding is used to pay BIPOC farmers to grow fresh, nutrient-dense food for food banks, including the Hoosier Hills Food Bank and Mother Hubbard's Cupboard. A contract termination between the Indiana Department of Health and People's Market has already been initiated. The People's Market had been serving as the lead organization for both the southwest and southeast regions. Because of misappropriation of funds, IDOH terminated the contract with People's Market, and no further funding has been allocated or accessible to BIPOC farmers in the entire southern region at this time. IDOH still plans to allocate LFPA funding to the southern region of Indiana, but because of People's Market's actions, and specifically the Local Food Purchasing Assistance Program, executive director at People's Market, IDOH has had to start from the beginning in stages of building the administrative infrastructure required for funding to be allocated to BIPOC farmers in order to implement new strategies to prevent any similar misuse of federal funds. It is unknown when the southern region of Indiana will finally receive the funding BIPOC farmers so desperately need and provide food banks with the most nutritious foods for the most vulnerable. There has been growing secrecy rather than transparency in the functioning of the BFPC and a severing of alliances and relationships with individuals and organizations. There's widespread fear in most of the local food-growing community that goes beyond self-policing language so as to not accidentally offend someone with the outcome to be slandered and called a racist and trans or homophobic, with a seeming intention of a loss of income and reputation within the community. This includes asking People's Market leadership about non- or incomplete payment for foods already delivered. Additionally, current vendors are being aggressively asked to sign a new contract, which includes language that condones physical violence as an acceptable resolution to disagreements, with the reasoning that such physicality is culturally acceptable in minority cultures. An infraction may be as simple as forgetting a person's pronouns, which may derive from language or cultural differences. My heart is sick. It is only a brief overview of what I have learned. I humbly ask you to question deeply and request documentation, including using FOIA requests if necessary, to learn the full depth of this issue, as well as to deny all Jack Hopkins grant funding to the BFPC and the People's Market until the time they are again abiding by the organizational bylaws, ensure state rules governing or regarding nonprofit board structure are intact, and the organizations have proven to be fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to make public comment?
I would like to make a motion. Last week, at the regular session, Economic and Sustainable Development Director Jane Cooper Smith talked about the New Urban Station project and the tax abatement that was granted, and the documentation that we had with their annual report indicated only 14 bedrooms being leased at the affordable level that was agreed upon. And the next day, Ms. Cooper Smith did email council members and said that she had spoken with the management at New Urban Station, and they clarified that there are 15 bedrooms, which is what the agreement required, 15 bedrooms being leased at the affordable rate. So we, given the information we had that there were only 14 and not 15 last week, we ask for New Urban Station to come to a hearing June 5th, but given the new information that we received, I move that the council cancel the June 5th, 2024 hearing on New Urban Station's tax abatement compliance, and direct staff to notify the property owner of this cancellation.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or debate? All right, all in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Mr. Lucas, if you could please communicate that to Ms. Cooper Smith. Next, we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments to make? Yes, Councilmember Sossberg?
I move that George Snyder be appointed to C2 on the Housing Quality Appeals Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded that George Snyder be appointed to seat C2 on the Housing Quality Appeals Board. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We thank Mr. Snyder for his service. Any other appointments? All right. In that case, we can move to legislation for second readings.
I move that ordinance 2024-10 be introduced by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that this be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Madam Clerk, if you could please read.
Ordinance 2024-10, amending ordinance 2325, which fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2024, regarding to add a position to the Department of Public Works and to revise job titles and job grades within the Office of the Mayor and the Department of Public Works to adjust or better reflect the nature of those positions. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance 2325, which fixes salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for the year 2024. The amendment reflects changes to job titles and job grades of three positions within the Office of the Mayor, a change to the job grade of one position within the Department of Public Works, and the creation of one new position within the Public Works Department. I move that ordinance 2024-10 be adopted.
Second.
All right. Who is here to present on this salary ordinance? Ms. Shar Pachak.
Yes.
Welcome.
Good. Thank you. Ms. Shar Pachak, I am the Human Resources Director. I am here presenting ordinance 2024-10. It amends ordinance 2325, which is fix designated salaries for 2024. So just in summary, this amendment reflects positions that more closely align with the operating needs for both the Office of the Mayor and also the Department of Public Works. And there is one adjustment to a position classification also within the Department of Public Works. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions on this ordinance? Councilmember Osari.
The, the very basic question that I have is the Public Works, was it a cost? I think all the other ones came with a budget surplus, with the exception, I think, of one of them was a, was a slight adjustment in pay. But the Public Works had $90,000 or something like that, $80,000 deficit, and I was curious where that money is coming from.
That is a good question. It's, to my understanding, no additional budget is needed, no additional budget appropriation for that position. My understanding, within the category one, there is budget funding that is available, whether there are some positions that maybe went unfilled, if there were positions that were advertised, and maybe someone vacated the positions, and it just left that additional funding available for the Department of Public Works.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have a follow-up. Can I ask a follow-up?
Remember, Osari.
Of the, of the positions there, does, does the Office of the Mayor intend to post those openly? Or are they reclassifying existing positions that have people in them?
They will be posted openly, and I will just confirm that is correct. Yes.
I think, I mean, the Director of Innovation, for example, currently is unfilled. Are any of the other positions filled with a person currently?
The Chief of Staff position, that will be eliminated based on this amendment, is currently filled with someone. Yes.
And so what happens to that person?
That individual has been communicated with and with the understanding that the reason behind this is to have positions that more appropriately align with the operating needs of the Office of the Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So just to add that that person is a person we value and who, sorry.
Please state your name for the record.
Gretchen Knapp, Deputy Mayor. So our current Chief of Staff recognized, knows that this change is happening and is invited to apply for some of the other roles if they meet her goals. And we will be working with her to make sure that she finds a new spot.
Thank you.
If she doesn't want one of those new positions.
All right. Good questions. Any other questions? Or Ms. Pachak?
My last follow-up.
Mr. Osari, take it away.
Last follow-up. Just on the question of, of the existing Chief of Staff, is it, do we not have a policy about sort of reclassifying existing positions? I mean, because the person is performing their duties well, it's just that the, and I understand that this, this position serves at the sort of, you know, pleasure of the mayor in the first place. But like, what is the city's usual position with, with employees in terms of reclassification and, and moving? And to follow up on Deputy Mayor Knapp's point, do we expect to be able to help that person find a job within city government? Because also, they come with quite a bit of institutional knowledge, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. So the process would be that that department head or the administration would work directly with the Department of Human Resources, so that we can have some conversation directly related to the position, the responsibilities, and what the department operating needs are. And that is the process that the Office of the Mayor follow. That is what our traditional practice is. So we went through those steps. And that is how we were able to actually develop the position descriptions that we have available now, those drafts. And your follow-up question was about if the person in the Chief of Staff position would be...
Do we think that they, I mean, so they'll be able to apply for these open positions?
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I will follow up on that. Is the incumbent given a priority for another position within the city of Bloomington?
When it comes to priority, I mean, obviously, they would have to actually meet the position description, the requirements, but we would be in communication with them so that they would know that any positions would be available. So we can't guarantee that they would get an opening, but we can definitely prioritize having conversations with them so that we can see if there's a position that would align with their skill set, including the new positions that will be posted.
I see. Okay. Any other questions on this ordinance? All right. Thank you. We will go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on ordinance 2024-10? And if you're joining us on Zoom, you can use the raised hand function if you'd like to comment. No takers. All right. We will come back to council members for any final comments before the vote. Are there any comments? Any comments from my colleagues? No? All right. Clerk Bolden, if you could please call the role on ordinance 2024-10.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Osari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Daly?
Yes.
All right. That ordinance passes with a vote of nine to zero.
I move that ordinance 2024-08 be introduced by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All right. It's been, there's a motion on the table to introduce ordinance 2024-08. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Clerk Bolden, if you could please read.
Ordinance 2024-08 to enact Title 13 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Stormwater. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance adopts Title 13 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Stormwater. This title incorporates all sections of stormwater regulations from Title 10 and introduces new stormwater permitting, bonding, and regulation in compliance with state requirements set forth in two general permits issued by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management in 2021, which apply statewide to all municipal separate stormwater sewer systems, of which the city of Bloomington, by and through its utilities department, is one. This title establishes a stormwater management permit, sets forth requirements for application of said permit, as well as requirements for bonding and association with said permit. This title establishes additional requirements for erosion and sediment control for land disturbing activities in compliance with the general permits. This title also sets forth green infrastructure requirements for development within the city of Bloomington and requirements for the maintenance of stormwater management features within the city of Bloomington. This title establishes regulation and enforcement measures, including fee structure, notices of violation procedure, available remedies, and an administrative appeals process, appeal process. In addition to complying with updated state permits, Title 13 takes steps to address and mitigate the increased social cost of climate change by establishing measures designed to reduce the flooding impacts of severe storm events throughout the city of Bloomington.
I move that ordinance 2024-08 be adopted.
Second.
All right. And I think we have Kat Zager, interim Director of City of Bloomington Utilities, to present.
Hello, I'm Kat Zager, and the interim Director of Utilities and also the Assistant Director for Environmental Programs. I'll be presenting with Liz Carter, the MS4 Coordinator. And we are presenting on ordinance 2024-08 to enact Title 13 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Stormwater. All right. Okay. Here's a quick overview of what we'll present on this evening. First, we will give a definition of the MS4, a little background of our stormwater regulation history. We'll then look at the Title 13 timeline and what that took to get here. We'll then review the chapters and content. And then finally, we'll give you the Title 13 highlights or what's new. So to give a very, very brief history of stormwater in Bloomington, we are regulated through the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Program. This was established by the EPA in 2003. We are a Phase 2 community, which means we have less than 100,000 people. Our MS4 program in CBU was significantly expanded in 2019 from one person to now we have a staff of five within our MS4 program. Currently, stormwater is regulated through Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code. This title is named wastewater. Stormwater regulations are just kind of, right now, stuck in the wastewater title in the BMC. So in 2021, item made a change from administering through the Indiana Administrative Code, more commonly known as Rule 5 and Rule 13, to administering through general permits, the Construction Stormwater General Permit, or the CSGP, and the MS4 General Permit. So as a part of this update, we needed to update our ordinances to comply with these new general permits. Our ordinance must be at least as strict as the general permits proposed by item. So as we were creating Title 13, we used the following source materials. We used Title 10. We took a lot of what, what was in Title 10 already and moved it to Title 13. We utilized the LTAP model ordinance, or the Local Technical Assistance Program out of Purdue. We took some content from Title 20 that made sense that regulated stormwater. And then, of course, we use the general permits, permits as a guiding document. So here's our timeline. September 11, 2023, we had draft one prepared for interdepartmental USB and local industry review. And then through the fall of 2023, up until spring of 2024, we had circulated drafts two through six through those groups and to the public as well. We received lots and lots of very helpful comments. We discussed those comments over several meetings and a couple back and forths, and we, to get, to get to something that was agreed upon by several groups. By April 22 in 2024, the USB then voted to recommend the revised Title 13 to council. And July 1 of this year is the state deadline from item to have this ordinance in place. So now I'm just going to go through each chapter by chapter and very briefly touch on each section. So chapters one and two, I'm going to do together because they're all pretty straightforward. Chapters one and two are the authority and title. So that's, you know, the authority, what gives us the authority to do this, and the title of the ordinance, purpose and intent, why and how we're going to do that. The interpretation is how we're, a reader should interpret this ordinance. And then, Chapter 2, all of that was in Chapter 1, and then in Chapter 2 is rates and charges. And most of this is directly from Title 10. So moving to Chapter 3, this is prohibited discharges and connections. In the MS4 program, this is also known as IDE, or illicit discharge detection and elimination. What this does is identify prohibited and exempted discharges to our storm system. This chapter also discusses the storage of hazardous and toxic materials to keep our waterways safe. It also discusses spill notification reporting requirements. When there's a significant spill, you're required to report that both to item and to the MS4. This chapter also sets forth allowances for us to do inspection, sample, and sampling and monitoring as needed. Chapter 4 is stormwater development standards. I'm going to be very brief in discussing these, as Liz will come later and discuss these more in depth. So in the development standards, we touch on a green infrastructure and pay-in-loe requirement. We also talk about parking lot drainage and bio retention. We have a regional detention option for the development of multiple parcels. And then we have vegetation standards specifically for stormwater features. Next is Chapter 5. Chapter 5 is specific to construction site stormwater control. This goes through the applicability of this and the exemptions. It also has a policy on the stormwater pollution prevention and having a stormwater pollution prevention plan. It also sets forth the calculations, design standards, specifications for these construction site stormwater controls. So not to be confused with Chapter 4, that's development standards, these are more design standards for the erosion and sediment controls. We also have a lengthy section on erosion and pollutant control requirements that really sets forth and makes clear what those requirements are. And then finally, we have an inspection, maintenance, record-keeping, and reporting section that allows us to do inspections, maintenance, and discusses the requirements for construction sites to have record-keeping and their own reporting. Chapter 6 is then our post-construction stormwater control. This sets forth a policy on post-construction stormwater management, which was largely absent in Title 10. This sets forth inspection, maintenance, record-keeping, and reporting again. And so the inspection, it sets forth our ability to inspect, but also the requirement of the owner to inspect, maintain, and keep records for their post-construction best management practices. And then this also sets forth the private property maintenance duties, essentially waterways on private property, the responsibilities that owners have. Chapter 7 also deals with post-construction. This is more dealing with the maintenance and inspection of these facilities. So this talks more about the operations and maintenance manuals that are going to be required for these post-construction stormwater features. These are going to be required and recorded with the property. It also talks about stormwater management facilities and BNP maintenance, and how that is the responsibility of the owner. This also talks about, talks more in depth about the records for inspection and maintenance activities that are in that O and M, or operations and maintenance manual. These records are to be kept and can be inspected by CBU. So then we have chap- So then we have Chapter 8, which deals with the administration and procedures. There is a lot in this chapter. Importantly, this talks about permits, how to get those permits, the review procedures behind those permits. It talks about easements, drainage easements, our ability to inspect. It also discusses bonds that are associated with those permits. And Liz will go into more detail about these as well. It talks more about inspections and closeout of the permit, how exactly will a developer get their permit closed out? This also sets forth the enforcement fine structure. So it's clearer and more specific with updated violations. And then, of course, there is an appeals section. Finally, Chapter 9 is definitions. So these definitions have come from multiple sources. Again, this came from the LTAP model ordinance, definitions that were in Title 10. And then it's also worth noting that there was substantial effort for this to be in agreement with similar definitions that are in other titles of the BMC like Title 6, 12, and 20. All right, now I'm going to hand it off to the MS4 coordinator, Liz Carter, who has put a substantial amount of work into this ordinance.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about some of the items we wanted to highlight in Title 13, mostly because they are responsibilities that CBU didn't have before. So we wanted to go into them a little more clearly. So Kat, when she touched on development standard, she said I'd talk about that more. I'm going to go through each section of it because all of that is new to CBU and to our group. I'm going to talk more about permitting, bonding, enforcement, and fine structure, and then post-construction. So the green infrastructure requirement, green infrastructure has been a focus for CBU these past five years. We have a dedicated budget to green infrastructure. Within my group, I have a green infrastructure crew of two people that maintain the green infrastructure around the city. That budget also goes to build green infrastructure as part of public projects. So if you've seen the rain gardens as part of the Seven Line or the rain gardens on either East or West Allen Street, that fund paid for those and then my crew maintains them. While we're very focused on green infrastructure, we think it's important for that to translate to the private development community as well. So our green infrastructure requirement, we are requiring that 50% of water quality treatment comes from green infrastructure. And that requirement is the first inch during a rain event. Past the first inch, it's not expected to be treated at all. Kat had mentioned we have a pay-in-lue fee. Sometimes green infrastructure just isn't possible. So if a, if a development can't do that 50% of water quality treatment from green infrastructure, they can pay $22 per cubic foot of water that is not being treated by green infrastructure. It still has to be treated, but they can pay that into a fund and we will use that fund to build green infrastructure through our group. It's important to note that the CBU engineering group will have to determine and agree with the designer that it is not feasible. Someone can't just say it's not feasible, therefore I'm not going to do it. So the next one is parking lot runoff management. We did take the UDO as inspiration for that, which is Title 20. It requires it all surface runoff from parking lots be treated with bio retention. It's triggered by new and redevelopment or by expansion of parking lots. Next is the regional detention option, and that is an option. So when there's multiple lots being built as part of a, as part of a development, someone can choose to have all of the detention for those multiple lots in one place. So we're laying out the requirements, if you would like to take that option, which includes submitting a drainage plan really early on so that we can see that the regional detention has been given appropriate space, that all the drainage clogs have been done. Next are the vegetation standards. Currently, CBU does not have any oversight over what is planted in our stormwater structures. So this is aligning with the Title 20 landscaping standards. It points to not allowing any invasive plants invasive by the state, the federal government, or by our local ordinance, the UDO. And importantly, it does not dictate what species must be used in our stormwater facilities. They just can't be invasive and we will review the plants that are chosen when we review plans generally. Next is permitting. So currently, when somebody is planning to build something, they do not receive a permit from City of Bloomington Utilities. We're looking to do a stormwater management permit as a way to regulate stormwater in compliance with what the state has required of us. A stormwater management permit would need to be obtained for any land disturbing activity in 2,500 square feet or more. There are exemptions for single-family residential projects under an acre. If it exceeds an acre, the state, item, says that we have to review it and regulate it. Another exemption would be City of Bloomington infrastructure projects that are under an acre. Again, if it's over, the state says we have to review it. But if they're under an acre and our engineering division can determine that there's a negligible impact to stormwater, we wouldn't require that to get a permit. So think like a sidewalk replacement. And then, of course, another exemption is projects that are regulated by other MS4s. So within the city of Bloomington, Indiana University is its own MS4. So we don't regulate, we don't review projects for that from the MS4 perspective. Also, NDOT, the Indiana Department of Transportation, is its own MS4 and they are checking their own projects. So those are exempt from our oversight. So the permitting really is facilitating a plan review process and clarifying a process that we already are doing. We are already reviewing plans, we're giving comments to designers, but it does clarify our review timelines that are set by item. And it just makes it more clear to those who are looking to develop in Bloomington what it is that they can expect to submit to us and receive back from us. It also gives us the ability to make sure that new infrastructure is constructed the way it was designed and the way it was reviewed. And it sets a process, a clear process, for expiration, termination, and the closeout of the permit. As part of the permitting process, we are looking to add bonding. Again, there's no part of City of Bloomington Utilities, almost 100%, that takes bonds from developers. There are other departments within the city that do that. So what we're looking at is when somebody applies for a permit, they will submit a bond estimate that gives the cost for all stormwater infrastructure and the sediment and erosion controls that will be on the site while it's under construction. Once a permit is issued, a performance bond would be posted, and that is CBU's assurance that what someone said they will build is built. And then, once, once we get to the certificate of completion, which is the closing out of the stormwater permit, we would transition over to a maintenance bond, if it'll click. So the idea behind this is we have a lot of projects that have trouble getting closed out because kind of everything has to be completely done and perfect to close it out. The idea behind a maintenance bond is we can issue a certificate of completion and say, your project is done from our perspective. Because we have a maintenance bond in place, we have assurance that things like vegetation will be kept up for the next three years. This allows time for vegetation to take hold. If you've ever, you know, seeded your front lawn and dealt with drought and then too much rain, you know, that can be a challenge. So we don't want to hold people's closeout over vegetation issues that are often dictated by weather. So once we go through closeout, the performance bond is released, a maintenance bond, which is much smaller, is put in this place primarily for vegetation. So the other thing that is new with the permitting process would be a certificate of completion. Currently, we are called out by contractors, by project site owners, whenever they think that they might be done with their project. And that leads to a lot of staff time coming out repeatedly. So what our plan here is that within one year of the site improvements being done, and this is kind of confusing to the extent that the intended use is operational, which means if it's an apartment building, folks have moved in a year after that. If it's the expansion of a parking lot, a year after our folks are parking in the parking lot. So a year after that, our expectation is you should be ready to get your project closed out. We're developing an application checklist to clearly communicate what our staff is looking for when we come out to inspect. And at the end of a project, we would need to see as-built plans, so what, any changes to the plans that were built. The O and M that Kat talked about, the operation and maintenance manual recorded with the property deed, any easements that were required need to be recorded. And then the maintenance bond would be provided to replace the performance bond. So the enforcement and fine structure is our next item. So we have set up a fine table and sort of parsed out different kinds of fines by the type of violation. In Title 10, right now, kind of every violation just says up to $2,500, which is a pretty expansive gap there. So it can be difficult for staff to determine where in there we should fall. It also gives us the ability to find and enforce for post-construction non-compliance, which is if you have built a development and you built a detention basin as part of that, you need to maintain that. If you don't maintain that basin, it's not going to do its job over time. It won't hold water, it won't treat water, and then, you know, we had you build it for nothing. So it gives us the ability to check on these items over time, five, 10, 20 years in the future, and make sure that they're still working as intended. It also gives us the ability to enforce compliance with the permit. Okay, so post-construction, which I kind of waded into. So this creates requirements for stormwater detention and water quality. A lot of that is in the stormwater design manual that you guys were sent later, well, today. And we're trying to be very clear about what it is we expect when folks are designing these things. It also sets minimum requirements and standards for operation and maintenance manuals. Again, this is an item that we require of folks to submit during plan review. We just don't have a requirement to record it with either the deed or the plat so that a future owner is aware that there is this feature, that they have these operation and maintenance requirements. So then, as Kat also mentioned, there's a requirement for inspection reports and maintenance records to be kept. So not only would you folks need to make sure they're checking on these post-construction items, they need to be keeping inspection reports, keeping maintenance records, so that if we come by five years from now and say, why is this, you know, going the way it is, we have some records to fall back on. Our post-construction section also requires that a BMP is a best management practice so that these post-construction facilities are maintained in functioning condition. Our current code does not require that. It also gives us the authority to inspect and require maintenance. There's also a section that if maintenance is required and it is repeatedly failed to be done, CBU can perform the work and bill the owner for the cost. And that is the end of my portion. I believe we also have Christopher Wheeler on Zoom, who is from City Legal, and Catherine and I are happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation and for all the hard work that went into this new title. Are there questions for Ms. Zager or Ms. Carter or Mr. Wheeler? Councilmember Allo.
Thank you for the presentations. It was really excellent. I have just a clarification. The green infrastructure requirement of 50% water quality treatment, the, so this is the handle of volume of, half the volume of a one-inch rain event. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then anything above that essentially can lead the site, I suppose?
So actually, the way that the 50% water quality volume treatment requirement would work is that there's still a requirement to treat 100% of your water quality volume, and also you would still have detention requirements. However, the green infrastructure requirement says that half of that needs to be treated with green infrastructure as opposed to something gray like a hydro mechanical separator.
Okay, so I have ignorance in the subject, but I'm assuming that when you have a rain event, most of the contaminants are the first flush, right? Because you've got all the metals and hydrocarbons, oils, and things like that that are initially washed away, and that's going to go into the green infrastructure to be broken down, right? Or maybe not metals, but at least the hydrocarbons. So, but if there's more water received than the green infrastructure can handle, then it goes into some other detention? Is it primarily initially directed to the green infrastructure and then overflow, I guess I should have been clear, goes into another detention basin? Is that correct?
Correct. So the green infrastructure depends on how it's designed, let's start there. But if you're imagining something smaller like a rain garden, I think that's one of the first things that comes to mind when people think about green infrastructure. So if you're thinking about something like that, it would typically, the stormwater would come through some sort of pretreatment device to slow it down and get a lot of the larger debris like trash, leaves, you know, the larger things that you can easily clean out in that pretreatment device. That can be anything from some riprap or there's different kinds of mechanical devices. So it'll go through there, and then that's when the, that first inch will hit the amended soils of the rain garden. And then, once you get past that first inch or whatever it was designed to, sometimes these rain gardens aren't just designed to the one inch, they are also designed to have a level of detention as well. But once you hit past that, there's, there has to be an overflow, and that overflow will probably, in most cases, be directed to the gray storm system, so inlets, pipes, your traditional storm system.
Thank you. I have other questions, but I'll wait to see if there are anyone else.
Actually, can I just follow up on Councilmember Allo's question? So one half of a one-inch rainfall needs to go through the green infrastructure. The rest of the rainfall should be going through some other kind of infrastructure? I'm sorry, I'm still not clear.
Absolutely, no, totally understandable. So green infrastructure is only one option for water quality treatment. So I typically think about stormwater features in two ways when you're thinking about detention and treatment. And so that first inch is the treatment volume, and that's your water quality volume. You can treat that either through green infrastructure, which is very common and usually the more cost-effective practice. But there are other ways to treat that water quality volume that include things that are kind of expensive, like a hydro mechanical separator, which is basically, and I'm going to try my best to just like describe it, it's like the stormwater will come in and it spins around, and then it, all of the pollutants and the trash and the sediment will settle, and then what spins out is clean water. So that's one way. That's not green infrastructure that would treat stormwater. It's really common in more dense situations.
Okay, and then there's detention, which is after the first inch or what?
Yeah, so it includes the first inch too. So it's anything after the first inch. And so detention is controlling that runoff. And so when you have detention, then you're controlling all the runoff from your site. And then what we're proposing and what we're doing with our design manual and our ordinance is looking at release rates. So you have all the stormwater that's going very fast potentially, goes into a detention basin that detains it for a period of time, and then slowly releases it at a rate that the downstream waterways can handle.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Zager? Councilmember Asari.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for being here at the meeting. Good to be at a meeting. I'm really excited about the, just generally about the change. It comes into effect on July 1, though, is that correct?
Yes.
How does this affect things that are currently in the pipeline for development? Like, for example, should we approve the Summit PUD? Would this, would these changes to stormwater apply?
Well, I don't know if I'm going to make a specific recommendation for you to approve the PUD or not, but...
I'm more curious about in the context of things that are already, you know, on their way, because we're not doing retrospective fitting of the updated standards, right? So, yeah.
So I think the Summit PUD is kind of pretty far down the pipeline compared to So I think the Summit PUD is kind of pretty far down the pipeline compared to when we would start reviewing using Title 13 starting July 1st. So the cutoff that we've given is that if a project, and project to be defined by the owner, if a project has been submitted to CBU before the July 1st deadline, then we will be reviewing off of the old rules and regulations and design standards. If it is submitted, if a project is submitted to CBU after the July 1st deadline, then it'll be subject to the new ordinance and design standards. So I don't know if that helped.
That helps. But currently, I thought that stormwater permits were housed with planning. Is that not the case?
So planning's permits are grading permits, which have helped in regulating stormwater. But we've coordinated with planning as far as how our stormwater permit is going to work with their grading water, or grading water, grading permit.
Cool, okay. I have some follow-up questions, but I'll let my colleagues ask first.
Any other first-round questions? All right, Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Stasburg.
I'll just ask a really short and easy one, to ask whether that, that rate of the base charge of $7.50 is, is that straight from Title, Title 10?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't changing. Thank you.
Okay, I think we can go back to Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you. This is, this topic is vegetation standards. So there are prohibited species, and I'm wondering, is this requirement in perpetuity? For instance, if native species are displaced by, say, something really noxious like phragmites or purple loostrife or something like that, are, is the property owner liable to maintain that?
Oh, yes, yes. So our post-construction chapters outline that it, I'm correcting, yep, that the, that these BMPs need to adhere to the vegetation standards in perpetuity. So, yeah.
Okay, so for instance, there is the, at College Mall, there's an outside mall area, and it has a swale that was filled with native, a native rain garden. And it persisted for a while, and I think some others, some invasives got in it, and their remedy was to mow it. So now there's just lawn grass. So in other words, that is an example where we need enforcement. Is that correct?
Potentially. I don't want to say exactly, yes, I haven't looked at it myself, but potentially.
All right, good to know. Thank you. I have another one more when it's my turn. Thanks.
Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. You mentioned that other organizations that work in town, like IU and NDOT, have their own policy and don't have to go through ours. What happens if our local stormwater regulations are more stringent than, say, the state's standards? Like, do they have to follow ours or not?
Oh, no, I suppose other MS4s don't have to follow ours. That's, so other MS4s are exempt from ours, but I suppose if someone was building an our MS4, then yes, they would have to follow our ordinances. Is that, was that the question?
Yeah, basically, I guess I'm thinking about things like invasives, and, you know, like, once again, plead ignorance, I don't know all of the state's regulations about this, so it's one of those, like, I mean, there's, there was a line in there somewhere that, you know, our local, our local regulations have to be at least as stringent as the state's, but that implies that they could be more stringent. So I guess I'm, you know, thinking about, okay, in the case that our, our guidelines are more strict, do these other organizations have to follow ours? And so I'm thinking about things like invasive species, for example, that just got brought up, like, what if we have something on our list of prohibited species that the state doesn't have? So are those organizations allowed to have that, that particular plant, even though locally we say no, but they're not having to follow our guidelines? So I guess I'm just trying to understand more about how these different agencies follow or do not follow our own local.
So other MS4s would not follow our ordinance. So IU is governed by their own MS4 and their own MS4 permit, so if they choose to be more or less strict, they are just doing their own thing, I suppose. Sure, yeah.
I'm going to add to that super briefly. So the other MS4s that we mentioned, while they're within the city limits, they are geographically separate from our MS4. So when we look at a map of the MS4 boundaries, there's this big hole in the middle where IU's campus is. So they, like, their boundaries don't overlap with ours, so if you're building within their geographic boundary, you follow their MS4. The same thing with NDOT, because East Third Street and then the bypass are within city limits, but they're in dots. So yes, there are certainly examples of MS4 regulations for, I know for sure, NDOT, that are less strict than ours. If they were to enter into our MS4's boundary, they would be bound by our rules. But as long as they're staying in their MS4, they're welcome to follow their less stringent rules. Is that kind of what you were getting at a little bit?
Yeah, so can I ask a follow-up to that? Okay, so say they plant a species within their little boundary that then migrates over, out of their boundary, then can we go in and say, hey, clean this up and get this out of our boundary, or can we not really do that? Sorry.
We can't really do that. That, that's sort of the nature of, Bloomington does have stricter policies on invasive species than many of the folks around us, and whether it comes by, you know, seeds coming by waterway or wind or animal, there's not a whole lot we can do to control others.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Asari, you had another question?
Yes, thank you so much. When, when we're, we're looking ahead at, so, sorry, let me, let me preface this question. Sorry, I got, I get too excited, it's, you know, yay, question time. The, adding the permitting process to the CBU is great, because that gives you the opportunity to run, I mean, who has the permit has the power, right? It's like, sort of, so it's very important for this process. However, when we add multiple steps to a developer or to a business, that they have to go to different groups and entities within the city to get their different permits, that slows down processes, right? And those, the slower processes mean cost, and those costs are then ultimately passed on to people. And so have we thought about ways that we can speed up permitting processes? I'm particularly interested in maintenance, right, because within, I think it's, Chapter 7 talks about how every, every single permit gets a maintenance schedule that's sort of submitted and approved post, I should have it in front of me and just refer more, more specifically to it. But that just sort of seems very slow to me, and so are there opportunities to maybe speed up that process? And are there ways that we, as a city council, can help, you know, not, obviously not just right now, but sort of moving forward in additional ordinances?
Absolutely. So as we were creating this title, that was definitely something that was at the forefront of our minds, was if we're going to have a permit, we want to be mindful of how this is going to impact developers and how this is going to fit within the process. We've had a lot of really constructive talks with planning and engineering, and a lot of those talks have centered around how this permit is going to work and fit with other processes. Specifically, we've talked a lot with planning and how that's going to interact with their grading permit. I do want to say a couple of things about how I believe that this could even make the permitting process more efficient. So currently, developers submit to CBU for the stormwater review, for the various reviews that CBU does. But because we don't have a laid-out permit process, sometimes it can feel a little confusing as to what's the next step? What do I need to do? At least with the stormwater ordinance, now you can refer to the ordinance and say, okay, this is the next step, and this is the next thing I need to do. So it feels very lengthy when you read it, but I think when you actually have it in front of you, it makes things go a little more quickly. And then the other thing that I think is really going to help developers move through their process a little faster is the Certificate of Completion. So like Liz had said before, it's a real struggle to close out a project, because all your vegetation has to be perfect. And vegetation doesn't play our games. Vegetation isn't in our timeline, and so the, that is the beauty of the Certificate of Completion, so that we can say, hey, you did everything else, all we're waiting on is for your plants to grow. Otherwise, looks good. So we can say, okay, here, your permit's closed, here's your NOT for the state, here's everything you need, we'll do a maintenance bond, so that in the case that things head belly up, we can fix it. So I think there, we've written in some things that I think will help expedite the process, actually.
Okay, I'll have a question, just very broadly. So does this ordinance make our stormwater protections stronger? In other words, does it better protect our environment than the previous stormwater sections in Title 10?
Absolutely. Most assuredly.
Thank you. If it's okay with my colleagues, I'd like to go to the amendments, and then we can come back to additional questions. So I'd like to move Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2024-08.
Second.
Okay, so Amendment 1 was in the packet addendum, and it is basically just correcting seven typographical errors in the ordinance. Six that I caught and one that Councilmember Stasburg caught. So are there any questions on that, comments? Is there anybody in the public who would like to talk about Amendment 1 to Ordinance Does anybody want to keep those typos in there? Okay. All right, coming back to council, any final thoughts on the amendment? If not, Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on Amendment 1?
Yes, Councilmember Sulek?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Abstain. Sorry, I haven't read it. I can't say yes. If it's something...
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
That amendment passes, 801. I believe we have a second one. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I'd like to move Amendment 2 to Ordinance 2024-08.
Second.
Did I say the right number? Was it 08 or 09? Yeah, we're on 08.
Yes.
Thank you. So this, this amendment was requested by staff as our utility service board appointment. I was happy to introduce it, though I'll defer to staff to share the rationale and substance.
All right. Ms. Zager or Ms. Carter, do you have, do you want to speak to this amendment?
I'd actually like to direct this to Chris Wheeler, who should be on the Zoom.
Mr. Wheeler. Welcome.
Good evening, Chris Wheeler. I would like to ask first, before I speak, if actually you can hear me.
Yay.
Yes.
Excellent. Well, good evening, everybody. This amendment actually addresses a need to have council review and approve a context for calculating the fee for the permit application. And it is being calculated based upon the review process of the design plans that will be presented at the time of the application. So this, this requirement, this amendment, actually also speaks to Indiana Code 36-9-23-25, which, if you'll follow me for a minute here, actually comes from our municipal sewage works. That is the Indiana Code section that identifies the fact that council has to approve fees under our sewage works. Now, follow me here. Under this statute is where a municipality may enact its stormwater utility. And so the stormwater utility truly is a part of our sewage works utility, but we, in utilities, kind of hold it over as the third utility at the utilities department. But because it sits within the sewage works utility, we have to follow sewage works statutory requirements, which mean that council has to approve fee structures. And those fee structures are based upon the services that are provided. And the service provided here is the review of those plans to issue the permit. So that's, that's a very quick dissertation on the legal background as to why we need this amendment. I'll say one last thing, if it's all right. We pulled permit language out of Title 20. Planning does not have to follow our sewage works statutes, and so when you read Title 20, you don't see any language discussing the fact that there's a fee associated with the permit. We borrowed language, this permit language, from Lafayette, who also has a very similar stormwater utility ordinance language. And that language that I'm borrowing from Lafayette is actually language that was drafted by our outside council, who represents the utilities department in all of its rates and fee structures, a gentleman by the name of David McGimsey, who's an attorney out of Indianapolis. And so this is where this language is coming from. I think it's appropriate, and we request that council review and approve.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Are there questions about Amendment 2 from council members? Councilmember Stasburg?
So the fee amount changes for each applicant depending on the project?
Yes, yes, that's the idea. It's based on the, it's based on the service provided, which is the review. And so if you were to charge a flat fee, it wouldn't adequately cover, it would either charge too much for smaller projects or not enough for larger projects.
Is there a minimum or anything like that, or an expected minimum, or, I mean, I guess I'm just thinking about, like, if I was, say, applying for this, and I would kind of want to get an idea about my budget and how much the fee might be, like, is there a range that I could expect?
A range. So, so this...
I guess I'm not necessarily expecting you to answer this on the spot, but I, I'm kind of looking forward to this, you know, like, when it's in practice, and if you're trying to, to budget and understand, like, you know, what the expectation might be, like, fiscally on your project. And so that's where it's like, somewhere in the book, is it going to say, like, the average or the expected, like, charges? I mean, it mentions including hours expended by professional staff, so it's like, well, like, how much do those professional staff get paid per hour? How long does it usually take for them? You know what I mean? Like, I feel like it's, it's a very fuzzy sort of payment expectation, and I guess just somewhere in the guidance, I think that it would be helpful for whoever it is that's applying for this permit to have a little bit, to have a range.
Yeah, so I envision that this would be, that the fee would be based on rounds of review. And so if you had a smaller project, you could, we would probably have rates for each round of review. And so if you had a smaller project, you said, two rounds of review, so you can kind of budget, okay, I will pay enough for two rounds of review. Or you have a very large project, and you're like, this is probably going to be like six to seven rounds of review, you could budget for that. I think that is how we would structure it, not necessarily having to, like, add up every penny of every salaried person who worked on it. I think we would try to find a good average and create more of a rate system, structure for it.
I'm going to follow up on that. So I have no concept of how much it would cost for one round, so that doesn't really help if, I mean, if somebody is a brand-new developer or has a small project, will there be some kind of ballpark guidelines provided to people?
Yeah, I think we need to establish those ballpark guidelines. I don't want to throw a random number out and then be completely wrong.
But you understand the...
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. I think we need to, we need to set those rates, and probably we'll have those in either our rules and regulations or our design manual.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Stossberg?
I guess I just, you know, I'm new to this. So, my understanding of what just got presented was that we, as council, have to set rates. And I feel like right now, we're being asked to approve a fee that we have no idea even the ballpark of what it might be. So, I'm wondering how appropriate it is for us right now to, to, like, approve something nebulous on very little information. So, I don't know if that's a question to you guys or a question to Mr. Lucas or a question to other council members who have more experience than I have around setting fees and whether this is how we usually set fees in terms of saying, yes, it's totally okay for CBU to set this nebulous fee that we don't really know. Does that make sense to anybody else? And if you'd like, we could come back with what that is. As this was an amendment, I think this was kind of a little later in the game before we could really have that set. So, we could come back with what that would look like. Absolutely.
Yeah, I also am concerned about this. Mr. Lucas, do you, is this, this seems very unusual to me that we would be setting, putting into code some fees where we have no idea the amount. Is this, does this have a precedent?
I can think of other instances where we have sort of established the manner for coming up with a fee or a cost. But the other part of the question, whether this satisfies the statute, may be a question for Mr. Wheeler and whether this sort of scheme that the staff have prepared meets utilities' needs. And again, beyond all of that, it's whether it's enough information for you all to make an informed decision. So, Mr. Wheeler, do you have any other input on this approach?
The language does satisfy the statute. It gives the method by which the fee gets calculated. And that method is contemplated to cover the cost of the service provided, which is one of the statutory methods by which these fees can be assessed. What you're doing is saying, this is the method to do it. And then, you're delegating the authority to the administrative branch, to this department, to come up with the actual fee itself, as opposed to putting a number in, into the ordinance. It's totally acceptable. And I think the point that Mrs. Zager brings up is well-placed. If council needs more information, I know that the Engineering Department at Utilities can come up with some rough estimates for the time that it spends on these reviews, because we've been doing these reviews for years. It's nothing new. It's just that we haven't assessed what that cost is, because these reviews were being done for planning. And CBU was not charging for those reviews to review the design work that's going, that's being presented for that part of the grading permit that planning currently uses. So, taking that piece of stormwater out of the grading permit, placing it with Utilities, and doing the same thing that Utilities has always been doing, which is review these plans. Now, Utilities has to stop and think about the amount of time that it's spending and what that cost actually is to the utility to do that, to provide that service. I'm getting long-winded, but that's basically, the point here is to delegate the authority to the Utilities Department to come up with that calculation.
If I can just add, so I agree that the city has taken this approach in other instances. I'm struggling to think of an example, but if you give me some time, I probably could, where the fees aren't specified in dollar amount, but the manner at which the department arrives at the fee is spelled out. Again, that may not satisfy the council's need for information tonight. But I agree with Mr. Wheeler. That's an approach the city has taken and can take here.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Well, I think that the fee structure, well, this is more like a comment, so should I wait?
Are there any other-
I can frame something as a question. The packet addendum that got sent out that kind of has, like, the manual in it? So, is that manual, because it's a little bit different in terms of, like, there's tables and there's charts and there's things like that. So, is that what's kind of intended to say, be given to a developer to say, here are these guidelines that you have to fill out, as opposed to just pointing them toward code, because the manual is maybe a little bit more user-friendly of a document? The manual's both, well, more user-friendly, but also more detailed about the specifics for the stormwater features, the release, the specific release rates, the designs. There's a lot more specifics in there that don't necessarily, I think, like, design standards might not need to be codified. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about Amendment 2? All right, let's go to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on Amendment 2 to Ordinance 202408? Nobody on Zoom?
No, not that I see.
All right, we'll come back to council for comments on Amendment 2. Councilmember Stossberg?
Well, I'll comment now since I brought up the fee thing. I do think, especially with the precedent that, and this concept, that what code is doing is it's establishing a process for the fee. I think that that's enough for, like, me right now in terms of going like, well, I don't know how much these things cost, et cetera, et cetera. But I think that it's really important that ultimately down the road, the developer is the one who really needs to know in terms of their budgeting, and that's who I'm, like, thinking of. And I think that it makes sense to have the fee structure like this so that people are actually paying for what they're getting, as opposed to, like, guessing. And it does make sense to not codify a specific fee because staff time and et cetera, et cetera. Like, those things change over time. You don't want to necessarily change code every time. But the intention of my second question there was to say, I really think that a fee range is really important to put in that manual that you give to developers. And so, that's kind of, I don't know if you are already planning on doing that or not, but if you were, that's great. And if you weren't, that would be my, like, council request to please make sure that there is some kind of expectation or range in there, however you want to do it, whether it's rounds or whether it's, you know, an estimated total for, based on the size of project or whatever, like, makes sense to you. I just think it's really important for people needing to apply to these permits to have some kind of idea of the expense that is going to be associated with that application. Thank you.
Any other comments on Amendment 2? All right, Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll for our vote on Amendment 2?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Zulik?
Yes. That amendment passes. And now, we'll go back to the ordinance as a whole. Are there further questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Thanks. I think this is my final question, and it had to do with bonding. So, there was an example of a failure of a developer to bond for infrastructure, including utility, stormwater infrastructure. Maybe you remember, it was Gentry Crest over at Renwick. And, well, I have a couple of questions. One is, is that anomalous or have there been other examples of this occurring?
Thank you for the question. So, the bonding that was not in place at Gentry Crest was a public improvement bond, which is held by the Engineering Department. So, I hate to speak to their items. The good news was the erosion control bond, which has been held by planning historically, was current on that particular project. So, there was an ability for CBU to build some of the pond that needed to be built there. But that was a bond out of the Engineering Department.
Okay, there was, there were a number of things that weren't fulfilled before the developer went bankrupt and left a lot of people with unbuilt homes and infrastructure that we had to cover, which was paving, trees, and that detention pond. As I recall, that detention pond wasn't constructed before the actual homes were. So, the homes were, there was a lot of earth moving going on with a steep slope and there was no detention essentially put in. So, okay, so, previously, that was engineering that held that, right? That required that bond. And now, is Utilities requiring the bond for, just for green infrastructure or for stormwater?
Great, great question. So, currently, if you build a development, there are two sorts of bonds that you would potentially need. One from the Engineering Department, which is for anything you're doing in the right-of-way. Sometimes that captures storm, because of course, an inlet on the side of the road is part of the storm system, but also part of the road. The other kind of bond you potentially would need is an erosion control bond out of planning that only covers the erosion controls during construction. So, there's no sense of, if you built the slopes of your pond wrong and you need to rebuild that, that typically wouldn't be captured from the erosion control bond. What we are proposing to do is to remove the erosion control bond from planning, bring it over into CBU, but also say you need to bond for all storm infrastructure that you're proposing to build. We have been in conversations with the Engineering Department since their public improvement bond contains some stormwater infrastructure. However, a public improvement bond is not required with all development. It's only required when plating has taken place, which is only a couple times a year. So, our conversation with them was their bond would cover what's within right-of-way in the case of a public improvement bond, and we would take everything outside of right-of-way. So, this particular process would not necessarily have prevented what happened at Gentry Crest. However, if we have a bond that's for all storm infrastructure on a development that's going to be fairly sizable, if the bond for the right-of-way items, if something happened, it wasn't kept current, our bonds will be made out to the City of Bloomington for storm infrastructure. So, at the very least, the inlets, the storm system, that kind of stuff within right-of-way would still fall within our purview. So, it wouldn't fix the paving, of course, but the storm that was in the street there would be covered under this bond. Does that kind of make sense? It was very long-winded.
Yes, that's a wonderful explanation. Now, I've got a grasp on it. Is, does the bond cover the full estimate of the cost?
The bond covers the full estimate of the cost plus 25% contingency.
Okay, good. All right, thank you very much for that.
Councilmember Ruff?
I just want to follow up on something that President, Council President Piedmont Smith mentioned earlier, when she asked if Title 13 represents a more robust, better way of strengthening our stormwater management in the community compared to what we have now. And you agreed. My question is, with that in mind, so the state, I'm always interested in state preemption, because they were always doing it. And they preempted our slope development regulation, it's not long ago, right? So, I'm wondering if, so if you, if you can't restrict based on slope, then the only thing you can really do to mitigate potential problems with stormwater and erosion and sediment control is additional requirements, right? Is that, was that a consciously any part of Title 13 at all? You know, thinking about that we, the state's preempted our ability to regulate in other ways, so we have to strengthen?
So, yeah, we thought about that. And yes, in some areas, this ordinance is more strict than the state. But we were careful to look at other ordinances within the state and other municipalities. And we felt that this was comparable to a lot of other MS4s and that it wasn't a lot more strict than other municipalities within Indiana. So, it's not necessarily so far past state regulation that it's less of a concern, I suppose. Was that the question?
So, do you, if we needed to go farther, if you believed, do you feel like there's room to do that, to become more restrictive, to require more thorough sediment erosion control infrastructure with the development on certain slopes? Or would the state probably move in and say, no, you can't do that either, do you think?
So, I think, so you're asking, is there room for us to be more strict in this ordinance, essentially? I would say there's always more room for us to be more strict and to have stricter regulations. It's a balancing act between stormwater and promoting development and promoting growth in the city. And so, we felt like this is, our stormwater ordinance goes leaps and bounds above what we currently have as far as our ability to regulate stormwater. For example, our post-construction program before this ordinance, we don't really have a lot of ways to enforce on, well, not just enforce, but like, also educate and also remedy post-construction features like bioretention basins and these other detention features. So, so, yeah, there could be more room to grow, but I think this is a huge step.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Chris Wheeler has a hand up.
Chris Wheeler, did you want to respond as well?
Yes, thank you. Well, shoot, hold on a second. All I wanted to do was hit the lower hand feature. And it proved problematic. Sorry about that. I would also like to add, at the present time, through the general permits that were issued, the state actually is inviting the MS4s to be at least as strict as the general permit language, which opens the door for us to be more strict. So, until such time as any kind of corrective measures might be taken at the state level, currently, this is one very rare example where home rule is alive and well.
Thank you for that clarification. Other questions on the ordinance? I have a question. So, it's been mentioned a few times that there were items in Title 20, the U D O, that are being pulled into this new title. So, does that mean we will need to do some revisions to the U D O? Or are they just going to be copied in both places?
I do believe there will be revisions to the U D O forthcoming. We've been working with planning to identify what those are.
Okay, so we can't expect to see a few revisions related to this?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Thank you. All right, any other questions on the ordinance before we go to the public? All right, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on Ordinance 202408 as amended? Please state your name and you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening again, Madam President, Council. This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I feel very lucky. Earlier this week, at the Utilities Service Board, I heard from a university elementary school sixth grader on stormwater management in her sort of presentation to that board. And CBU did an excellent job presentation. Kat and Liz were right on point and I felt like I learned a lot. And I can't really speak to the science of what we're trying to accomplish, other than it's an important issue. I do want to kind of piggyback on Councilmember Assari's point about the permit process. You know, I don't think it'd surprise anybody, but I do get calls on the cumbersome permit process here in the City of Bloomington. And we just need to make sure as we move forward that the expectations are very clear to those developers. Is the feedback direct? Mayor Thompson, I think one of the first things she put together was the review of city work. And part of that was analysis of, you know, constituent response time and sort of looking back at our work. But now, we're getting to look in the future here. So, it's my recommendation that we do have some sort of an internal analysis by CBU, some sort of timelines on how long this process is taking and some feedback from those petitioners. And maybe sort of report six months, a year to this body on how that's doing. Because I think it's important that we have these standards that sort of meet our expectations, but also that the process itself is- standards that sort of meet our expectations, but also that the process itself is fair and is, is making sure that we are friendly to developers while also making sure that environmentally this is going to be sustainable and that it meets some of the climate mitigation methods that this body and, and the residents itself are looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public care to comment? Mr. Lucas, do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
No, not that I see.
Okay. Well, then we can come back to council members for final comments on Ordinance 2024-08. Councilmember Asari?
Two super quick comments for, just for all of my fellow council members. One is that this is, this is, you know, great, great updates. If anybody's interested in working on helping CBU, anything that we can do to support us move also to like a stormwater management process as well, so we can like, you know, use more water in cool ways and things like that. I'd be really interested in working on that with you all. And the second thing I'd really be interested in working on is if anybody wants to do like an audit of permitting processes, and we can figure out some way to just like make a master permit or something like that, I'd be really happy to work on that. So just saying it for, if anyone wants to join in on this, I will be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council members? All right, seeing none, I think we're ready for a vote on Ordinance 2024-08.
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Sorry. Zulik?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
All right, that passes nine zero. Thank you very much to everybody from CBU for your work.
I move that Ordinance 2024-09 be introduced by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, will the clerk please read the ordinance by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2024-09 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater to remove stormwater language. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater. These amendments remove all stormwater-related ordinance language from Title 10 in response to the adoption of Title 13 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled stormwater. These amendments are necessary to avoid duplication and the potential for conflict between Title 10 and the newly adopted Title 13. Title 13 incorporates all sections of Title 10 stormwater language and introduces new stormwater permitting, bonding, and regulation in compliance with state requirements set forth in two general permits issued by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management in 2021, which applies statewide to all municipal separate stormwater sewer systems, of which the city of Bloomington by and through its Utilities Department is one.
Thank you.
I move that Ordinance 2024-09 be adopted.
Second.
All right. And who will present this from CBU? Is Mr. Wheeler going to speak to it? Yes. Hello there.
Good evening again. Chris Wheeler with City Legal. I'm happy to present this one. I think it's really straightforward and simple based upon what we just accomplished here a minute ago with Title 13. What you have before you this evening, council members, is a, an effort on our behalf to now remove all of the stormwater language that once resided in Title 10 so that there isn't any redundancy and there isn't any competition between these two titles or, or even any incongruities. And so what you're looking at is simply Title 10 with all of the stormwater language redacted. And we would ask that council approve this amendment to Title 10. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wheeler? Seeing none, is there any member of the public who would like to speak to Ordinance 2024-09? Mr. Lucas, is there anybody on Zoom?
There are people on Zoom, but none that want to speak to this item.
That's what I meant. Thank you. All right, back to council members. Does any council member care to comment on Ordinance 2024-09? All right, then we can go ahead and call the roll. Clerk Bolden, if you will.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger's out of the room. Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes by a vote of eight zero.
I move that Ordinance 2024-11 be introduced by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Okay, so we've moved on to first readings. All, all in favor of the clerk reading this into the record?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2024-11 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington, sorry, of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Amending Section 15 Point 12 Point 010 Stop Intersections to remove stop intersections on Seventh Street from Schedule A and add multi-stop intersections on Seventh Street to Schedule B. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title 15 Vehicles and Traffic of the Bloomington Municipal Code and comes forth at the request of city staff. The ordinance makes the following change: replaces stop intersections with multi-stop intersections along Seventh Street at Morton Street, Washington Street, Lincoln Street, Grant Street, and Dunn Street.
Thank you. I think we may have a motion regarding this item.
I would like to make a motion. I'm sorry, hang on. Basically, I would like to move that the council sends this ordinance to the Bike Ped Commission at its May 13th meeting to, so they can make a formal recommendation to council as they did the last time this ordinance came up before us.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to invite the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission to provide us with a recommendation. Any debates on this? Debate, question?
Just point, point of information?
Yes.
If, if that's sent that, we'd still see it on the 13. So the motion is just to send it to them, not to delay us reading it again. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
Councilmember Ruff?
I'm just wondering if, if this is, do we typically ask, I mean, I hadn't served for the last four years. So do we typically ask for, say, the Environmental Commission with a formal invitation to come and, and present on an item? Do we, we ask that typically of other, of boards and commissions on issues that they have particular, particular relevance to?
Is that a question for Mr. Lucas?
Or the sponsor of the, the amendment or the condition or the motion?
I would say yes. In the previous term, we tend to ask boards to weigh in on items on our agenda that are relevant to them slash kind of like why they exist.
Yes, that's right.
Did, did you have anything to add, Mr. Lucas?
Oh, just some context. There was a, an ordinance last year that came before the council where a similar motion was made to formally invite, I think it was also the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission to make a recommendation on an ordinance. So there, there has been a precedent for this in the past. Many ordinances, just as a matter of practice, from department to department, are taken to relevant boards and commissions for a recommendation before they come to the council. Typically, Title 15 ordinances go before the Traffic Commission, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission, and often the Parking Commission. Because of the limited scope here, I'm not sure if staff went to all of those commissions. But Bike and Ped Commission isn't, is a commission that normally weighs in on Title 15. I take Councilmember Rosenbarger to, one of the reasons she's making this motion is because of that, and also there is a precedent for specifically asking for a recommendation from another board or commission.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion or comments on the motion? All right. Can we just do a voice vote on, on this? Okay, so there's a motion on the table to ask the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission to provide us with a formal recommendation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We're ready for the next item.
Great. I move that Ordinance 2024-12 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2024-. Let's try that again. Ordinance 2024-12 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Amending Section 15 Point 12 Point 010 to remove one-stop intersection on Constitution Avenue and Liberty Drive, Section 15 Point 12 Point 030 to add one signalized intersection on Constitution Way and Liberty Drive, Section 15 Point 32 Point 030 to replace pull-in angle parking with back-in angle parking on Sixth Street between Walnut Street and, okay, 35 West of Washington Street and Section 15 32 080 to remove no parking zones on the west, north side of Atwater Avenue between Park Avenue and Faculty Avenue, and to codify and extend the no parking zone on the south side of Grimes Lane from Morton Street to 100 East of Palmer Avenue. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title 15 Vehicles and Traffic of the Bloomington Municipal Code and comes forth at the request of city staff. The ordinance makes the following changes: replaces stop intersection with signalized intersection at Constitution Avenue and Liberty Drive, replaces pull-in angle parking with back-in angle parking on Sixth Street between Walnut and Washington Streets, removes the no parking zone on the north side of Atwater Avenue between Park and Faculty Avenues, clarifies and combines all three no parking zones on the north side of Grimes Lane into one line to read as one no parking zone between Morton Street and Woodlawn Avenue, codifies and extends the no parking zone on the south side of Grimes Lane from Morton Street to 100 East of Palmer Avenue, and adds a loading zone to a portion of South Washington between Kirkwood Avenue and the alley between Kirkwood Avenue and Fourth Street.
Thank you. We now move to our additional period of public comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda. And a maximum of 25 minutes is set aside. I see one person approaching the podium. So if you could be sure to sign in and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Yeah, hi. My name is Jada B. You guys probably know me. Usually, I'm here with about 50 other people trying to shut you down, but tonight I'm not doing that. Don't worry. I'm here to make public comment about People's Market. Earlier, apparently, there was a comment made about People's Market. And once you say that, you summon me from the ether, and I come to talk to you about food justice in Monroe County. People's Market has been existence for five years in Bloomington. This is our fifth year. We started due to the administration problems with the city-run market not being able to remove white supremacy and white supremacists in particular from that market. We formed a mix, from a mix of farmers, vendors, and activists like myself, who wanted to come together to create something different. And through that, we created a completely different farmer's market in our community. We focus on intersectional anti-racism and food justice. I have been privileged to work with amazing people over the years, and in particular, Lauren McAllister, who is my ride-or-die partner in crime at, at People's Market. We also work with Yvonne Hensley, who is another co-person in, in People's Market. I just came off of the farm right now, covered in dirt right now, because I want to address the fact of what we do at People's Market, right? We feed people every single week. Every single Saturday, we put food into the hands of people who cannot afford food in our community. We work with several organizations in our community to ensure that fresh food goes into the hands of people who are in need. In our first year of operations, during COVID, I might add, we gave away $55,000 worth of free food. The next year in 2021, we gave away $65,000 worth of free food. The next year after that, we got some more grants, and we gave away $85,000 of free food. In this last year, in 2023, we got a grant for $500,000, and that went to local farmers. And then the food from those local farmers went to people in need in our community. $500,000 of free food flowing into Monroe County through the efforts of Black queer women in our community. Yes, we have rules and regulations about who can and cannot be involved in our organization. We're a private organization. We're allowed to do that. We are very strict when it comes to anti-racism. We've recently had to remove people because of their racism. Racism is abundant in our community. In fact, I believe some of the words that were spoken here were fueled by racism in our community. You can like me or not like me. I know some of you, we've maybe had personal conflicts before. I don't really care. I'm not here to be liked. I'm here to help people in need. That is my main goal. That is what I do every single week. That is what People's Market does every single week. So if there's ever a grant that comes before you, I certainly hope that you think about people in need and not about the blackface standing in front of you that you may or may not like. Because the need for free food and for fresh food in our community has only grown since we started. It is extreme. And for the students that are on campus, one out of every two of them is hungry. That's insane. We live in an abundant community, an abundant culture, and an abundant world. And so I ask you guys to think really hard about what your values are and to think whether it's about one person or whether it's about lots of people, right? And as always, People's Market is open every single Saturday, and we invite people to come in and question us and talk to us and talk about food justice and talk about anti-racism. We do this every single week. Just this past week, we had a processing session for all of the students who were traumatized by the snipers on the roof at, at Indiana University. We helped several students work through their trauma at a farmer's market. This week, we're having celebrations for the Pacific Islanders, our Hawaiian contingency, that's what I like to call them, which is Mama Duke's Hawaiian BBQ. And Hawaiian Hoosiers are having a huge party to celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islanders Month this weekend and next weekend. So I encourage you guys to come to People's Market. It may seem like we're adversarial when we're talking about politics, but at People's Market, the politics and the food go together. And we hope that you can come and enjoy yourself and talk to us about the work that we're doing in our, in our community instead of spreading lies and rumors or listening to lies and rumors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Anybody online, Mr. Lucas?
No, not that I see.
Thank you. Our rules for public comment do indicate that individuals can only speak either at the beginning public comment period or at the last, at the final public comment period of the evening.
I, I do see a hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
We have Lauren M.
Hey, everyone. I'm Lauren McAllister. I'm a local farmer. I want to reiterate a lot of what Jada has to say. I'm really interested in how our community can be responsive to and really reparative in the way that we can address local food injustice and needs. I really appreciate all of your time going over all these ordinances and helping us as a community make better decisions. And I encourage all of us to have discernment about the kind of community we want to see in the future. Presently, like Jada was talking about, Monroe County and the state of Indiana is experiencing food apartheid. There are communities who are close by and in adjacent counties who are going to have a spike in food insecurity over the summer. There are students who will be more hungry than ever because they won't be in school. There'll be families who are paying for childcare and will have less. There'll be families who are paying for childcare and will have less money to spend on food. And so our program really works to provide nutritional security for those who are interested and able to receive local whole foods, but also prepared foods. I really appreciate what Jada had to say and your time because listening and hearing from your community is part of your role as, in your service on the council. And I want to reiterate that the work at People's Market is to be utilized and in service to those who could not attend this meeting and who are pushed out and excluded from our food system simply because they don't have enough money. And I think that that's an important concept. I think that's a way that we can address our duty to each other. Our liberation is a shared experience. And I see People's Cooperative Market, local farming, local economies as an intersectional conversation. I'm hopeful that after today, people listening and taking the time to pay attention to what's going on in our community, even when it's uncomfortable, are able to address these needs with a discerning mind and with some compassion about how to invest tax dollars into alleviating the hunger pains that occur in our county and our city. Thanks.
All right, are there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment? Nobody? All right, we will go, move on to matters of council schedule. We do have a work session tomorrow at noon in the McCloskey Room and also accessible via Zoom on the topic of the Convention Center expansion. I would at this time like to call for a work session on Wednesday, April 29th, to discuss budget priorities of council. May 29th. So if, I would appreciate if there might be a second for that.
Second.
I think we need to vote on a work session being scheduled, is that right, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, and I apologize if I missed it. What was the time for that?
At 6:30 PM at our usual, it's a Wednesday evening, but we do not have a regular session scheduled, so I did reach out to council members and most people can make it on the 29th as well as the clerk's office. Clerk Bolden, did I not reach out and you said one of your deputies could attend?
Oh, yeah, I wasn't saying you didn't ask me, I just said, oh, I won't be here, but someone will.
Okay, just making sure. On the topic of budget priorities. So all in favor of scheduling this work session on May 29th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Is there anything else on our schedule, Mr. Lucas?
No, thank you.
All right, in that case, we can adjourn. Thank you.